It's nine o'clock, so I'll call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Independence City Commission for the item on the agenda is to consider authorizing an emergency grant program as recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Board. Since our last meeting, the application has been prepared and we have that in our packet. At this time then, we will open it for discussion by the commission, commissioners? Who wants to be first? Oh, and with the Facebook, the camera is only on me, so if you each could identify yourself when you speak so that those watching by Facebook would know who's speaking. So, Dean?
Well, thank you, Mayor. This is Commissioner Hayes speaking. I want to applaud the Economic Development Advisory Board for the work they've done so far on this and bringing it to us in such a prompt manner so that we could address it. Looking at this, my first question is that the eligibility of the businesses as it's, as are listed here, some of this language may be vague, so we're leaning hard on the committee that will be qualifying each of the applicants to determine a precise definition, for instance, of the word "small" or of the word "retail" when we say that the businesses are defined as restaurant and small retail businesses. So, further clarification might be an advantage to them if we wanted to spend some time talking about that. Otherwise, we are just limiting this to the first 80 applicants, so that is also an important note because with just 80 grants available, a prompt application and a seamless application process would be very helpful. So, I would like some assurance that the application process is up and running and can handle volume of, you know, let's say, an overload might not happen so that the applicants can be assured that they can apply and their application can be timely.
I think you brought up a good point of looking at that, and we do have the opportunity now to discuss that for clarification so that it would go smoother. I think our, originally we were looking, at the purpose of this was to provide financial assistance to small local businesses, home-owned, brick-and-mortar type businesses that have been adversely affected economically since the outbreak of the COVID-19. We've talked about the hospitality industry being affected and small retail, and in that as you look, some of the, there's some additional small businesses that provide support service for the community. I don't have to visit the barber quite as often as some, but the barber shops, the beauty shops are also being affected, and they're not specifically called out, but in the idea of small business, I think they would be included. So, you know, maybe we want to, before we go on, since you brought that point up, is just discuss to make sure we're on the same page, so...
Indeed. This is Commissioner Hayes again. So, when we think about service organizations or organizations that are in the business of providing service, I know special accommodations have been made for filing for unemployment for certain people who hadn't qualified in the past. People who are self-employed or part-time workers or independent contractors can now file where they did not have that ability to do so in the past. And I haven't drilled down into that to make sure that I'm talking about the people in the, in the barber shops and salons that you're talking about there, but I would certainly advise those people to check that out thoroughly and understand what their, what that regulation states with regard to their activity. Because if they had to shut down their shop because of social distancing or the stay-at-home order, they were certainly impacted by these governmental regulations or actions. And so, that would, I think, put them into qualifying for these types of benefits, the unemployment benefits. Qualifying our economic, our emergency grant program then to business entities, I think, is an important thing, and not to individuals unless the business as it stands is a sole proprietorship, would be worthy of clarification so that people who are individually impacted would go ahead and pursue these other sources of funding, of benefit.
So, you're saying that the business should have employees, not just be a sole proprietor of themselves operating in the business? Or are we...
I would say that that is a point of clarification that needs to be made perhaps so that we are not, in some way, missing people who need to be benefited by this emergency grant and at the same time not doubling up on benefits for people who may have another source of support.
Right. Commissioner Yussisi?
Yeah, I agree with that. This is Commissioner Yussisi. My questions were concerning, first of all, in the application that I saw that was sent to me on an email, it's stated that a grant up to $5,000 would be provided. And in this, what I have before me here, it says, "The Economic Development and Advisory Board recommends funding an emergency grant program which would provide a $5,000 grant, $5,000 grant to certain hospitality and small retail businesses." So, which one is it? Is it up to $5,000 or it's just $5,000?
It was flat $5,000 is what was discussed at the last meeting.
Okay. Do I notice there was a difference, excuse me, on the application that I looked at that they were to fill out? And then my other question also, I think it's already been brought up, in looking at the list of businesses that I have here that was sent to me, there are some that have multiple businesses. In other words, they have a brick-and-mortar and then they run side businesses out of that. So, my question initially from last night was that, would they, would they qualify if they had a city license? Let's say they were running a sideline business in addition to a brick-and-mortar business? So, if they had a city license and they resolved within the city limits of independence, or the business was within the city limits of independence, that they would actually qualify, could qualify for two separate?
If they met all the criteria.
If they met all the criteria.
And if they had separate, and the business was in a separate tax ID, I mean, it was separately incorporated, not the same business.
Right.
And then they had a permanent brick-and-mortar address within the city and a separate city license, then according to the way it is now, yes, that is accurate.
Okay. Then my question would be, if we're limiting to 80, then is there a possibility that that particular, in those particular cases, they might actually receive more funding and that would eliminate someone at the other end, that the money would be drawn out by the time we got to that list?
Yes. I mean, anybody that takes advantage of it, that's less money for someone else, so yeah, that's, it's all going to come out of the same amount of funds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That clarifies some questions I had last night.
One thing that was brought up in reviewing this is looking at, you know, not only clarifying small, if it expands to service business, but also that a business would be open a minimum number of hours per week so that it would actually be a true service retail-type Not just a storefront or a place that would be utilized part-time, but not really function as a business. Maybe a requirement of something, 30 hours a week that it's open to the public?
Prior to the crisis, right?
Pardon?
That would be, they were open at least 30 hours a week prior to the crisis, correct?
Right, right. Again, looking at some of the pre-existing businesses. Again, reminding of the purpose, so it is to aid to cover the debts that are incurred for lack of business to the various entities we've discussed, whether it be utilities, labor taxes, rent payment. We discussed, I think, last Tuesday, loss of inventory by being prepared for normal work cycles and then reducing the hours being to dine-in or eliminating dine-in, going carryout and curb, that there is a life on the, on some of the products that this grant would help offset some of the loss. Did you receive the email this morning? Lacey went back through the list and kind of identified various businesses, and I think, Lacey, are you listening in today?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. I thought you said yesterday that the number from 80 was maybe 56, 60, somewhere in that range?
I believe the list that I went through and kind of sent you this morning had 51, maybe 52. But again, that list is just based off of the shopping and dining guide that the Chamber has put out. It includes non-Chamber, non-Main Street members. But there are probably some other small retail, and again, like barbershop, beauty, salon places that are not included on that list.
Yeah. What, I don't know if you guys saw the list, but Lacey had identified corporate-owned services or businesses within the community, and, you know, our goal was to support the locally-owned businesses. So, if it was a corporate with no local ownership, that's what she was trying to get an idea of really where we would be. So, you know, with our cap of $400,000 at the time and $5,000 grants, this does allow some small businesses that maybe we're not thinking of now to submit an application for review. If you notice in the application, the general information of where they are, address, contact information, identifying if they've submitted for other local loans, number of employees, but then the second page goes into description of their business, a short explanation of how the COVID-19 has negatively impacted their business, asking to describe how the, would use the funds, how it would enhance their ability of the business to survive, what type of working capital will the funds be used for, and then to list business resource partners that the business is working with. So, it tries to help identify some use that it would be used, not to have a healthy business take advantage of the $5,000 to expand their business or do a basic remodeling out of the funds, but our intent is to provide funding that will help a struggling business that has been affected by the COVID-19 weather the storm and still be available when we hope that the governor starts lifting some of the restrictions by the end of the month. Any questions from, further questions from the commission?
No, I, this is Commissioner Hayes, and as I have heard what you have said, I want to clarify that while I am pointing out that there is potential points of confusion within the language of this emergency grant program, it is the responsibility of the committee to resolve those conflicts, and I'm just wanting to make sure and elevate that this is a concern I have. Other than that, I do not think it's particularly important to resolve that here at this time.
Was it one particular item in the description on the RCA?
Particularly the definition of "small" because I think it's different, what they're trying to do is differentiate locally-owned from corporate-owned perhaps and not put some kind of a value in terms of either revenues or profits or some other kind of economic metric there, but just to differentiate between local ownership and corporate ownership.
"Small" is one of those words that can take multiple meaning, relevant to what?
Indeed. So, on a scale, would there be an, a extra "small" that wouldn't qualify?
To remove the "small" because it says it has to be owned and operated by a Montgomery County resident.
Eliminating the word "small" would also remove that conflict.
So, that would be the easy way to do it, just remove it.
So, what we're saying, it would read, "which would provide a $5,000 grant to certain hospitality and retail businesses that have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic."
Correct.
Okay. Commissioner Yussisi?
No, I think that's fine.
Within the eligible businesses, this is Commissioner Hayes, within eligible businesses, there is also a repeat of the word "small," "retail," the words, and so it would also be removed from that language.
And just for clarity, the definition of a retail business is one that provides a service or sells a product or resells a product to or within the community. So, looking at beauty shops, a lot of them are selling products.
Indeed.
They're helping us all look better, and...
Some of us. Some of us can't be helped, speaking for myself personally.
Yeah. There's an old saying of, what, every old barn needs a good coat of paint, but I think that was the only other area. So, just run through this for clarification. Eligible businesses, hospitality industry excluding hotel motel, defined as restaurant and retail businesses that sell goods, located within the city limits with a permanent address, brick-and-mortar business locations excluding home businesses. Owner franchises, franchisee must live within Montgomery County, must hold a current city business license, must have an open and operate, must have been opening and operating at the time of the COVID-19 pandemic, must remain, must reopen within 60 days after the governor rescends executive order restricting residents and businesses due to the COVID-19 pandemic, must have been negatively impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. And then, how do you feel about adding the requirement that they must have operated a minimum of 30 hours per week prior to the pandemic?
And Mayor, you could add that to the one you already have, must have been open and operating at the time of the COVID pandemic at a minimum of 30 hours per week.
Okay. Is that acceptable with Commissioner Hayes and Commissioner Yussisi?
You would insert, this is Commissioner Hayes, you would insert that as saying, "must have been open and operating a minimum of 30 hours a week at the time of the COVID-19 pandemic." Is that how you would do that?
Yeah, that would be, that would be good.
Must have been open and operating a minimum of 30 hours per week at the time of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Or it could be prior to.
Prior to.
And if you want to put an actual date in there, we could, you know, when this all started, you could say as of March 1st if you wanted to.
Kelly, if you were going to choose a date, what date would that be?
I think March 1st. I mean, they would have been operating prior to March 1st, don't you think?
This is, this is Lacey. May I ask what, what this exclusion or qualification is trying to determine? Because I, I mean, I would argue, for example, like Dicky's, a new business that was open prior to the pandemic, I think after March 1st, but has been negatively impacted and has just as, you know, would need support just like all the other businesses. Same with, on an hourly, you know, hourly, like Indy Nutrition, I don't know that they're open 30 hours, but they've been impacted negatively. Brew Works, I don't, I don't know if they're 30 hours. It just seems very arbitrary, and I'm trying to hone in on what you want to exclude.
This is Commissioner Hayes again, and it's not, it's not, I believe, my intention to penalize any of the businesses that you've just listed, especially the ones that are startups and that are particularly at risk during this time of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, without researching that further to understand who would be excluded by a 30-hour-per-week restriction, what would you suggest, Lacey, might be an appropriate restriction to catch?
Well, I think you're trying to exclude the home businesses or the businesses that aren't truly brick-and-mortar and have regular operations. So, I, I do think that they're already excluded with the current qualifications. So, I, I'm not sure I have a suggestion other than leaning on the committee to be able to determine a true, you know, functioning business that's not a side business. I, I think those would have a home occupation license, though.
A home occupation license?
Which is already excluded.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, you could, you know, maybe something like a buy appointment-only business? I, I'm not sure. I think you're trying to exclude those that aren't regularly operating.
This is Chuck, and I've joined the call in case anyone has any questions I might be able to answer.
Good morning, Chuck.
Good morning, Chuck.
Morning.
Kelly, what kind of businesses can you see, looking at the information that you've had, that would be excluded in with that restriction?
Well, I was thinking, if somebody had a catering business, maybe they had a permanent location, but it wasn't something they were doing all the time, it wasn't a full-time thing. Maybe somebody had a gift store that was only open by appointment that might have a permanent location downtown, and I don't know that that is the intent, because you're wanting to get those that are, that's primarily what they are doing. And so, that's what we were trying to do, and it wasn't meant to exclude Dicky's at all. I kind of forgot about that being open at that time and certainly don't want to do So, that, that was kind of our thought, just to make sure that there was language in there that we didn't have those type of businesses apply, and then we had to turn around and deny them. If we had it in the criteria, they, they would know that they were not eligible, so that's where the 30 hours kind of were, thought that might be a, I'm not saying it's a perfect answer, but that was kind of the thought. You know, somebody may have a storefront downtown and be open one or two days a week as a hobby or as a side business, and that, I don't think that's the intent, and that would not be a home occupation license.
No, I think the 30 hours would be good to have in there and then just use it as discretion as the applicant comes in and if it is...
Kelly, this is Chuck. Could you, and I apologize again for having a conflict and being late to the call, but could you repeat for me what exclusion that you're considering?
Chuck, it was to say that the business prior to the pandemic was operating an average of 30 hours per week.
During the pandemic?
No, prior to.
Okay.
And then we were looking at a date, and we thought March 1st, but like for Dicky's, they opened after that, and our intention was not to cut them out, so that wouldn't be a good date to use.
Well, can I make a comment?
Sure.
To me, the purpose of the program is to keep the businesses that are struggling to operate now, in whatever form they're operating, to continue to operate through the pandemic and come out on the other side as best they can. So, for me, I don't see the importance of how many hours they were open prior to the pandemic, as long as they're open and doing their best to continue operations at this point, and we have a reasonable expectation that the $5,000 will help them continue to do so afterwards.
The hours is just defining an active business prior to, of course, if the business is just new and opening, common sense would say that they would be considered because they're trying to make an attempt now, but as Kelly described, the possibility of a business that is operating by appointment, if you're not trying to work enough hours to sustain it full-time, then that would be an automatic exclusion from the $5,000. So...
What about saying then, "buy appointment-only type businesses or side businesses are excluded"?
The commissioners, do you feel we need to change it from the 30 hours prior to a buy appointment or just leave it and let discretion and common sense rule from there?
Well, this is Commissioner Yussisi, by...
Calling out the by appointment only, like if we were looking at considering hair salons, beauty shops, you know, all their business is by appointment. You, you call in and you schedule an appointment in advance for whatever beauty treatment or hair appointment you're looking for. So all their business is driven by appointment and then whatever products they sell to their clientele as they're within the shop receiving services. So, and they're open. Most of those are open probably four or five days a week, a minimum of four, I would imagine. So that would exclude them.
Commissioner Hayes?
Thank you. Commissioner Hayes speaking. What, what I believe we're trying to establish for, is some direction for the application committee to understand what we mean by operating when it says open and operating at the time. We are already granting that committee a great deal of discretion. And really what we're talking about is if we have 81 applicants, what's the tiebreaker? How do we know which one of the candidates or the applicants to exclude if we have more than 80? And so an understanding that this would only probably come into play if we had more than 80 applicants and that hours of operation might be one of the qualifying characteristics that would say this is either a valid applicant or an invalid applicant. So since we're granting so much discretion to the committee as it is, perhaps leaving that to the discretion of the committee and, and, and letting them determine which candidate or, excuse me, applicant is the one to disqualify is best.
This is Commissioner Yussisi. I, I think that's a good point, Commissioner Hayes. I, I think with the questions that are being asked on the application, it, it does give the, the Economic Development Group a guideline to go by and to make those determinations. I think maybe we're trying to get a little to, getting down to the infinite details of this and maybe that needs to be left to this application, which is, has a total of enough questions on there that we're going to provide enough information for the people that are looking at this to make a determination as, as to whether this meets requirement and is then therefore eligible to receive a grant from this program. So I think maybe we should maybe stay away from the, the actual fine details on this. And I think this information will actually break it down and be the guide for them to use to, to who meets the qualifications based on this application that's been turned in. And then, and then leave it at, at that because it's not going to be a perfect scenario or situation that we're going to come up with, but it's, it's going to be a good framework that's already been established that they can use this to make the determination as to how they're going to answer that particular application on a one-to-one basis.
The application also does give information to say whether somebody qualifies. So, you know, if you have the information there and they, in this case of the minimum hours, then they would know that if, if it is eliminating by appointment, then they don't have to take the time and have additional applications for the, the committee to review. It just provides information that the application should also let somebody know if they're going to qualify or not. So, you know, if, if a storefront that operates strictly by appointment only is sufficient to turn in an application and consume the time to review, then we could leave it like that. Or the defining and the points just help explain to the one filling out the application if they have a fair chance at getting the money too. So what's the commission's pleasure?
This is Commissioner Hayes. I would, at this point, I would say let's just leave the language as is with its stating must have been open and operating at the time of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm in agreement with that.
Okay. Then we'll scratch that requirement that we discussed for the 30 minutes or 30 hours prior to, okay?
Thank you.
Mayor Koflish, I just have one question. When you read through the list of eligible businesses, right under the hospitality industry, we have defined as restaurant and we, we crossed out small. So it reads defined as restaurant and retail business and you have businesses that sell goods. But you also gave a breakdown of what you considered definition of retail is. Do you want to include that definition in that statement at that point?
This is Commissioner Hayes. Were you addressing me?
Mayor Koflish.
Okay.
Defining retail as a business that sells a service?
Yes, you had here, provides service or sells a product or, or resale of a product. That, that was how you defined retail in, in an earlier statement. So do you want, do you want to clarify that more? Or do you want to leave that as is? And I'm asking that of you and Commissioner Hayes.
That was my understanding of what retail is. I don't know if there's other understandings that we need a definition of retail. Commissioner Hayes?
What I think we had discussed earlier is that businesses that sell goods are going to be within our definition of retail and that it would include primarily our organizations that may have primarily be offering a service, but also within their establishment also offer retail, are then also included in the definition of retail because they have retail sales within that brick and mortar location and meet the other criteria.
So if a business provides a service that they order products for a customer, they would be a retail business?
So the tiebreaker would be, do they charge sales tax for that? And if they do, it's retail?
Good point. Okay.
Great point.
Thank you.
So you want to modify that one that says businesses that sell goods that are subject to sales tax?
Does that, is that exclusive? I mean, this is Commissioner Hayes. Does that language exclude anyone you can think of that sells goods that are, that does not require the addition of sales taxes?
I mean, I can't think of anybody.
I can't think of anybody either.
That'd be a wholesaler.
What about like a plumber or electrician? Do they sell sales tax? Is there sales tax on the goods that they utilize as part of their service?
It's my understanding that, that the parts that are enumerated on the invoice have sales tax applied to them, but the labor does not.
This is Chuck Goad. That's correct. Any of the parts, the labor is not generating sales tax, but the parts and supply they use do.
But their primary business is not to sell the products, but to do the repair?
Yeah, and then those products or items that they use are actually purchased from another storefront, brick and mortar building, more than likely to, to complete the repairs. I mean, they're not, they're restocking their truck with material that they use throughout the week, so. And they're, and then they're being charged that sales tax through wherever they're getting their supplies from when they make that purchase.
So this is Commissioner Hayes speaking again to Chuck Goad. And that is Chuck, does that open it up too broadly?
I, I would just provide you with clarification on the how sales taxes collected on this, on that. It would, it could potentially open it up more broadly if you included those, correct?
Coming back to the main purpose is to provide financial assistance to the small local businesses that have been adversely affected economically. If that's our goal, then do we want to look at restricting the adversely affected businesses? You know, even if it's a small business locally owned that we've talked about and they're providing a service, charging sales tax for their, their product, their commodity that they're handling through their, their business. And the only place we'd really need to define retail business then would be with the, the review that if a, if a application comes in and the business is charging sales tax, that defines them as retail, then they would be allowed to submit an application and be considered for the grant.
Yeah. Well, if they, this is Commissioner Hayes. And yes, if they meet the other criteria, absolutely. And then their, their language that they used to answer the, the long-answer questions on the second page would help the committee understand to the degree that they have been negatively impacted. And that would also be one of those screening questions that may or may not include the company or business in the, in the grant program.
I would think that the committee could ask for additional information if they had a question, whether they were negatively affected, like what their sales were prior to and after the crisis. If they needed to verify that, that would show whether or not they were negatively impacted. If they needed to get more information, that might be a possibility through that process.
Thank you, Kelly. Kelly, uh?
Thank you, Kelly. This is Commissioner Hayes speaking. That does help me understand it better and once again points to the fact that we are granting the committee a great deal of discretion with regard to the screening process. So I'm comfortable with giving them the opportunity for follow-up with the applicant.
Okay, the whole effort from this is not to be restrictive. Originally, when we began talking, there were, looked at some other programs that limited the number of employees to not a, not an organization over five. We started talking with $100,000 and, you know, looking at downtown businesses. But when you look at the impact of the COVID-19 on our economy, it's much broader than that. So as we've gone, we've tried to open it up to look at addressing bottom line the adversely affected businesses to try and give them a means to operate through the epidemic and continue on the other side so that they will be able in some form to operate and reestablish. So, you know, initially, we've, we raised from what was mentioned at $100,000 to $400,000. We looked at our treasurer's report and saw the Economic Development Fund Number Six had $900,000 and the incubator building had $350,000. So the $400,000 was looked at the list of 80 businesses. We thought if we find out that there are businesses that follow the criteria that we've talked about, stopping at $400,000 is not a mandate. We can choose as a commission to allow more economic development money to deal with these other businesses that have been adversely affected. So, you know, if, if we're saying we're concerned about our small businesses and want to help them get to the other side, then we have to review the applications to make sure that they are valid, use the money, but then not stop and say that's the end of our limit. And we could face this again to look at, do we want to increase the funding to support? Or have we done all we can do? But we don't want to eliminate a viable business because of the pandemic. So I think the, the application has come together very quick. Ideally, we would have a, a written program that would aid in review of the criteria. But due to the time constraints, we don't have that. I think the best is if it's in agreement with the commission that we authorize the distribution of the application, the emergency response grant application. And I think the April 6th was the date for the, the submittal and then the review would begin. And then the distribution of the funds would, would take place shortly after that. So immediately, we can help the commission or, we can help the community weather the storm. We do have a commission meeting August, excuse me, April 9th, that we could possibly have some report on number of applications and, and what's transpired. And if we need to consider additional funds, we could take action at a later time within the next week or so.
This is Commissioner Hayes. And Mr. Mayor, I would agree that this is a rational first step. I would agree that we are finding new things out every day. And as the situation continues to develop, I think we've left ourselves an opportunity with regard to, you know, future response by the major's, or the magnitude of this initial emergency grant. We can return to this issue if need be and talk about further steps. So I am satisfied with the emergency grant program as it's in front of me right now and with the changes we've discussed.
Okay. Commissioner Yussisi?
I'm in agreement with the changes that we've made on this that we've talked about today. And I think you're right. The, the situation continues to evolve hourly. And sometimes in the government, when they put out legislation, sometimes it's a one-size-fits-all. And we may come up with some situations here in our own community that don't necessarily fit all the guidelines that the government has set up in addition with all the red tape that usually goes with any type of government program. That was the idea behind this economic grant, that we make it to where it would be understandable that the people that would, would be able to fill out an application without a lot of red tape and we would be able to get the money to them as soon as possible. And, and I'm all for it. If we look down the, the road and we see that we need to address some other issues, we still do have a funding source available that we can bring into play if we need it. So I'm agreeing with, with Commissioner Hayes and what you have said this morning, Mayor.
So with that, I think that our task today is to.
I'm good, you're good.
What? Okay. Our task today is to authorize the expense of $400,000 in an emergency grant. Our task today is to authorize the expense of $400,000 in an emergency grant, uh, application program, allowing a maximum of $5,000 to be distributed to, uh, businesses that have completed the application and approved by the review committee, and, so with that...
Mayor, may I interrupt for just a minute? Do we need to check to see if they, the people that are listening, Chuck and the group, they have any other, if they have questions for us?
Unknown participant is now joining.
No, I think we can...
This is Chuck Goddard. I, I support what you've done, and I agree with the comments that this is a very good first step, and hopefully it'll, um, address the issue, and if it, and if we find that it's insufficient, uh, the commission can revisit it quickly. We've, you've acted very quickly on this first phase, and I applaud you for that, and I think we'll have an opportunity to see how it works, fine-tune it, and, uh, potentially look at another round if it's necessary.
All right, thank you, Chuck.
Yeah, because...
Commissioners, this is Tricia Purdon with Montgomery County Action Hospital. Um, Lacy, Kelly and I worked over the last day to create an online version of this application for those that, um, might need to complete this application on their mobile phone or other device. Um, that, uh, link will be provided to you as well, and it is ready to go as soon as you say we can go live. And that has incorporated the changes you've made today.
I think we're ready for a motion?
Commissioner Hayes speaking. I move to approve the emergency grant program as outlined and amended today.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. There is no other business, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.